Tuesday, March ninth, it is seven thirty two P M. I am calling the meeting of the planning board. Opening it. Today, we have a bunch of things going on. But before we begin, I want everyone to know, first of all, that we are being recorded this evening by WinCam. Thank you very much, WinCam. They will be broadcasting this live on their stations, but also they record it and put it up on their website. So if anyone wants to re-watch the meeting or look at it for reference, they do have that available on their website, usually a day or two after our meeting gets posted. But you are being recorded if you choose to speak or when I call on you. Also, this today with me is Brian Zakali, who is the town planner and my fellow members of the planning board. Diab Jerius, who is the vice chair and also the secretary, according to Massachusetts state laws. And then we have Maureen Meister, Cheryl Wolf, and Heather Hannan. So all five members of the planning board are here with us this evening. Today, we'll go through some brief updates on just things that are going on in town that we have as liaisons to other boards and also things that Brian is getting information on. We have four Z B A special permits again to all those, three of them, who were with us in our last meeting, who we just could not get out before we needed to end the meeting. Thank you so much for coming back. I'm really, really sorry we could not get that taken care of at such a late hour. We are going to go through our potential springtime meeting articles. We are looking at making a modification to a curb cut bylaw that we have. There is some discrepancy in there for interpretation, and we would just want to tighten it up. And if there's any other things that we wanted to discuss for springtime meeting, those articles are due, I believe, this Friday before the warrant article closes. We have a bunch of meeting minutes, and then at the end of the meeting, we will be going into executive session to deal with the town planners review. So it's nothing, it's just to to deal with his yearly review, which we do. Typically, we try to do it early in the year. We're a week or two behind right now, but that is why we are going into executive session. That will be the only reason we will be in executive session. After that, it says new business not known at time of the meeting. However, I'm going to strike that, and from executive session, we will not be returning into public, and we will be adjourning. So we will come out of executive session, but we will immediately adjourn. So there'll be no other further discussions thereafter the executive session. So no one from the public needs to be concerned that we will discuss anything. All communication and discussion of the planning board outside of the town planners review will happen before we go into executive session. So going up, Brian, do you have any updates for for everyone? I'll let you kick it off tonight. The town planner.
Thank you, Heather. One, I attended a webinar today for the local Rapid Area Recovery Program through the state. So we're going to be receiving technical assistance specifically for businesses in our town center in order to rebound from the pandemic. So this could be in the form of having more of an online presence as well as many other different practices that we're all going to be learning about over the next little bit. So that's something that's certainly good for the businesses, and we're excited about that. With the manager's office today, I reviewed the outdoor dining applications. What we basically determined was we're going to be providing less outdoor dining space, so more parking spaces will be available than was previously, but not by much, and there's going to be a shifting around and a little more equitable among the restaurants. We did not receive any retail applications. So that was actually more concerning than anything in terms of why we didn't receive any, and maybe the answer is just that they would like to have the spaces be parking spaces for their patrons. So but that's something that we wanted to figure out. Nothing else is shooting to mind at the moment. I'll hand it back to you, Heather.
Thank you, Brian. So I have a couple of updates as well. I just want to keep everyone, since we have a lot of public with us today, to remind you that on the ballot on March thirtieth, there is a capital override that is on that ballot from Capitol Planning as part of that, which I do sit on. Morocco, it's the culvert is going to be the last culvert of the flood mitigation projects is coming up. It is expensive, and we can't fund it within our regular budget and are going for a capital override for that, that will finalize the long-term projects that we have been doing that started on the south side and moving all the way to the north to deal with the flood mitigations of the town of Winchester. So this is the final project to close out that those series of projects that we had for that. And then alongside that is all one, it's all one project, is also to support Morocco to do some upgrades to that elementary school so that they can sustain themselves for ten years until we can get them with the state for funding for a new school. So it's all one question that'll be on the ballot for March thirtieth for residents to consider. Also with that, Diab and I met with FinCom today with our representative who is meeting with us and who has delegated the planning board. We had a really great discussion with them. We had, we didn't know, and Brian, you might be able to talk about this, but Lisa reduced what we had requested by, I believe, ten thousand dollars, which was money we had requested for Holton Street project, so we could do a analysis of the Holton Street area to do some planning, so we could get some better zoning over in that area of town to better support growth and development. Lisa reduced that request, and FinCom just had a lot of questions about our professional services, what we use them for, why we need them. What did we use them for in twenty twenty-one? I mean, twenty twenty fiscal year, and why we didn't use much of it. A lot of it had to do with COVID. And then also, a lot of it had to do with that we were very heavy into using fifty-three G this past year, which is great, which means it doesn't come out of town's budgets. But that's, we had a good conversation, and I included Diab in that meeting with the rep from FinCom, because so there's an easier transition through the next election season. Also, I had an email with Lisa Wong yesterday to ask them if the select board has taken into consideration looking at the four acres for sale that are for sale over by Behind Mahoney's. And I don't know what the outcome of that is, but I did ask for that to get brought to the select board's attention as soon as possible. So for anyone who is just listening in and not sure what I'm talking about, there is, it's kind of under the radar. But there are four acres of land that are coming up for sale behind Mahoney's tucked back in over by the Greek Streets, back up in there. Beautiful views of Boston from the land that they're trying to come, marketing for forty B and Arc Dot, many different things. And so I think it might be beneficial, but it's really up to the select board how they want to proceed to look at it as potential, as the town securing that land and then doing it and then selling it back. But at that, at this point, I just wanted to make sure that the select board were aware of it, and they were making choices on how to proceed with that, if at all. I know that we had been notified of it, I believe. Maureen, you had actually brought it to our attention, but I wasn't, I have not heard a peep out of it from the select board. So I wanted to make sure that they knew about it, and it seems that they did not. So I did have communication regarding that. And that is the updates from my perspective. Anyone else?
Looks like Diab had his hand raised and then Maureen.
Yeah, I think I just want to make a slight correction. I believe that unless something happened after the meeting this afternoon with FinCom that we, there was only five thousand dollars removed from our request.
Thank you for correcting me, Diab. Yep.
Thanks.
It went from, just as a slight clarification, also, I believe, I believe the town manager cut everyone's budget ten percent at some level, and they didn't, she didn't cut our entire budget ten percent, but our professional services ten percent. But I believe there was an across-the-board cut situation. Just, so yeah.
So was it just targeted at the planning board for no reason? It was trying to get the budget down. And FinCom did mention, the representative did mention that FinCom is coming in with budgets that are quite ballooned that are impacting the town budget. But obviously, they'll take care of that on their side and provide feedback to town meeting, but they're just being very rigorous with all boards and committees budgets to really get to the root, make sure that everything has value and leads to value for the town.
Maureen? More, just because this board is constituted, it's going to be wrapping up very soon. I was wondering whether there was any attempt yet made to contact, I will say, the owner of the Italian aid house on Main Street at Canal.
So I will interject in that with Maureen. They are not interested in speaking with us. Brian has tried a couple of times, and they're not interested. So I have not put it on the agenda because they're not.
Okay. And then the other person relating to that still would be the developer. And he's met with Brian, so I think the board maybe should be trying to have the conversation.
Brian, where do you leave with the developer? I know with the property, but not.
Just Marino, we should say. Is it Anthony? I can't remember which Marino.
Correct. Anthony.
Go ahead.
I mean, I have no, I have no new information related, I have not reached out to him since the last time he was before the, before the board looking, looking at possibilities.
So I thought there was something in a weekly update. It was quite a while. I mean, it was not like last year. It was the past few months.
Yeah, so I have not, I have not heard any update from, from him.
So I think maybe if we can bring him in, we ought to explain to him what the goals are for that property. And he was, he contacted you, I believe. Anyway, Main Street's certainly a priority for this board. We're focusing on it. And I think it's really important to not have a debacle over there, and the best thing is usually to talk to the players.
I believe, a hundred percent, I think getting ahead, I think that's what, you know, you know, getting ahead of before the, before the study. It's kind of weird, because the last project that we did see, we basically kind of told, or I believe it was two weeks ago, that was a pre-application meeting, we were basically like, you know, let's wait to see what the study happens. So maybe he got that message that they're not really willing to play. So it'd be good to.
As long as that's the reality. I don't know anything except where we left off.
I'll reach out, I'll reach out to Anthony.
Right. And then the other one is, I'm wondering whether the, was there any attempt, and I see now, maybe it won't work, but I mean, I think a joint meeting with the zoning board would be very useful. This board has a lot more experience than the incoming board will have, and I think, but maybe it's going to be the next board. But I really do think it's, it's really important to try to.
So Maureen, our board is having a large turnover along with the Z B A at the same exact time. So Brian and I did discuss this as potentially putting it on the agenda, but who we'd be meeting with is not going to be the Z B A. So there was more of a discussion of Art doing a joint meeting of training and different, more of that conversation. Obviously, Diab and Heather and me, if I, you know, stay on, would have that conversation with the Z B A about those other issues. But a lot of it has been talking more about training and opening that communication up. But each week now and the end of, the end of your term, that doesn't, it's not a productive meeting.
So I guess maybe then a recommendation to the board members who are staying that there might be, maybe it just should be, you can call them people who know the planning board, just invite people in. But we have some experience here that's going to be very useful, and I think there's some real important connections that need to be made. And the kind of, I guess you'd say, tutorial that Art would give would be very different, I think, from what we would discuss if we were all together. So although we're heading off, I think some of us maybe would be willing, and it would be beneficial to everybody to just come back and just say what we've observed and how we think things can be improved, because I think there's a very large, a great deal to improve.
Well, as one, as one of the people who is going to remain on the board, I think that improving our relationships with the other boards is important. How that goes forward depends in part on how we create those relationships and.
So I just want to clarify, I wasn't talking about relationships, but more sharing how to make, just structurally, maybe, how to, what can be done to make all the pieces come together better.
I understand what you're saying.
No, I don't want to suggest this about personalities or anything.
I'm not saying, when I use the word relationship, I talk about working relationships between the boards. And we've had a, we've had a difficult relationships with some of the boards in the past, and I think in part that remains. And I would, in order for us to exchange a dialogue about how things might be improved, I think we have to first work on understanding who's on the new board and create some sort of framework for that dialogue.
Heather, Cheryl, did you have any updates?
No, I don't.
All right, all right. Nope. All right, let's go. So we can stay on schedule at seven forty-eight. So let's start. We have Z B A petition number three nine three two, two forty-seven Swanton Street. I need to recuse myself on this one, so Diab, I'm going to let you take over. I, Brian, if you'd be so kind to give me a call when you need me to come back in, that would be great. And then I will return.
All right, I'll text you.
So, Diab, you're up.
Thank you. And just so everyone who's waiting knows that we have begun, if the board, if it seems like the board is looking to approve, then we're not really going to open it up for public comment. But if the board seems like it's going to vote for unfavorable action, then we will open up for public comment. So this is petition number three nine three two for two hundred and forty-seven Swanton Street. Petitioners are seeking a special permit to have to be permitted to construct additions that will be located closer to the front property line than being permitted as of right. Brian, do you want to start with your review, please?
Sure. So you covered the beginning. This, the house was constructed in eighteen ninety-one. It was not listed in Mac, in Macris. At the time of this moment, the Historical Commission had not reviewed it, but they did review it last night. And I, they had minor revisions, I believe, to some windows in the porch. But they, they did vote favorably on, that it was not going to negatively impact the historic resource based upon those minor conditions. The proposal entails a rather large addition with a new attached garage fronting on White Street. I know it appears that the front setback on Swan is encroaching the covered porch is existing and will simply be enclosed. The neighbors showed support for the project. I did, the one kind of note I had, I really did not have any issues with this proposal. The only kind of note that I had was that both sides of White Street have sidewalks on them, except for right in front of White Street on this, on this portion of the, of the street. I'm hoping the applicant potentially could work with the town to finish that sidewalk. I don't know if that's potentially too much, and I can understand that it is. I can just kind of show you very, very quickly, just a Google Street View, that it just kind of, the sidewalk just kind of dies, and I'm not sure why it wouldn't continue. I know that this is not necessarily the require, you know, it's not a requirement for them to do that. Typically, we, sorry for that. So this is not typically something that is, you know, it's not in the regs anywhere, but we have said in the past, you know, a lot of the time is when developers happen to come in and maybe demolish a few houses and then put up a whole bunch of new houses, and we might ask them, we ask them to continue the sidewalk. This is not that situation, so I'm not trying to make a huge deal about it, but I wanted to make a note of it, because it, it does obviously look strange that we have sidewalks on both sides of the streets, and then it just ends for this last hundred or so feet. That is all I had. I'm going to bring up the plans now, and I'll bring it back to you, Diab.
Thank you. Do we have any comments from engineering on this? We got a couple of memos. I don't have them in front of me. Is there anything from engineering on the line?
Hello, yes, this is engineering. The portion of the work that falls under Z B A review reduces the amount of impervious surface on the air in the, in the, on the site. Therefore, there's no specific stormwater mitigation requirements that the engineering department has for the applicant. However, you know, the applicant is responsible for ensuring that there is no increase in volume or rate of runoff from their property to impact neighboring properties. In addition, it appears that the front entrance on Swanton Street is going to be relocated to White Street. And that is in fact the case. The applicant will have to come before the engineering department to get an application for a new address.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, did, did we get something from the design review committee on this one?
Sorry, I was making Maureen a co-host so that she could unmute herself. The D R C is meeting tomorrow night.
Okay, okay.
And the applicant does have their hand raised, but I, I'm thinking we're, why don't we let the board, or, you know, the floor is yours, but just wanted to let you know that Kerry Murray, the applicant, has, has their hand raised.
Okay, why don't we go through the board first, and that way, if something comes up, then the applicant can answer questions at the same time as they make their comments, and that will get through it more quickly. So does, who would like to go first on this project? Maureen has her hand up, so please go ahead, and I think you are unmuted, right?
Thanks, yeah, and thanks, Brian. So there were two things. First question to Brian, sorry, you're now muted, but isn't, isn't there a town right-of-way for the sidewalk?
So my guess is the reason why this hasn't happened, and I have not looked into this, is that possibly there's just a weird property line issue here. But I don't know exactly, so the right-of-way should, should certainly be on their plan in terms of what is their land and not, but in terms of how far the right-of-way goes. I believe that I'm going to try to get something to the Z B A before, before that, or incorporate incorporating it into the memo is a note for me, I guess, is the answer.
Yeah, no, good. And then the other thing is, to me, and I think the plans are useful, and I wouldn't necessarily recommend unfavorable, so I don't know that we need a big discussion at this point, but I do think the, yeah, I was actually, yeah, so that's the, that's the south, yeah, right, okay. But I'm looking at the front facade now. Here we go. And, no, that's existing. There, well, I'll look at the plans. I'm just as happy with the plans. I just think this porch could still be maintained with a door, and the plans don't change. So even if it's, I don't know what, even if it's wide open into the room, fine, or just retain it as a porch. But the point is, the real need for that door to front on Swanton Street, the reason is that this is a street we're trying to incur, what, improve, along with North Main Street, and we, and cross Swanton, North Main, those are the big ones. And to create a pedestrian environment, you need to have a building read as a place for pedestrians, and that includes the access to the house with its norm, with its front on Swanton Street. I realized, because I went down there just the other day to look and see what's going on, and I know, I believe it's the nursing home that's next, but after that, it's houses again. And I think maintaining that walking experience with houses with doors fronting on Swanton, the historic entrance for this house is really valuable. And again, I don't think that that's asking a lot from the owners, because they, their interior plan doesn't change at all. They can retain their plan and the addition and use that side entrance the way it's designed. So I think that it would be a good, what, a good contribution to everybody who ends up walking up and down, yeah, there we are. Thank you, Brian, perfect. That porch adds a lot. It carries, it carries a lot. It contributes a lot to the experience for anybody who, and that's a lot of people, I think, who end up walking up and down Swanton Street. So that would be my one hope suggestion, and I'd be curious to hear what the rest of the board thinks.
Thank you, Maureen. Comments from other members of the board?
I had a similar thought as Maureen. Engineering answered my question about how it works if someone moves their front door, because I was wondering about, like, emergency people needing their address, but it sounds like they get a new address. There's a house in my neighborhood that moved their front door around the corner, but they kept the other door, like Maureen is saying. So I have seen that, where there's a front door on both streets. It's a little confusing, but I agree that it's nice to keep the scale and the rhythm of having doors and feeling like a house, and that the house isn't turning its back on the street. That's it.
Thank you. Cheryl, did you hear something you wanted to say?
No, I don't have anything to add.
Okay. I concur with all the comments. I think that I walk by that particular house a lot, because I live just a couple of blocks away, and having that front door there really provides, as Maureen said, it's a very, it's a more friendly pedestrian environment. I have one concern about the sidewalk on the side of the house is that there's not a lot of real estate there on the side of the house, and putting in a sidewalk would take away quite a bit of greenery there. I mean, it's just a very narrow strip. Brian, if you could maneuver us onto White Street, if you've got the Google. So putting in a full-width sidewalk right next to the house, I think, would really negatively impact that property. It is a busy area, but there is a full side, there, it's possible they could put one into the, in the rear yard. They are taking that tree down, I believe, because that's part of it. But that'd be my only concern, is that it's a really narrow stretch of land there.
I think it's a good point, but I do think the far side of the driveway, probably at that point, they could pick up on the side.
Yeah.
But again, it has to do with the right-of-way. Really, it's not their option if we want it. The town can pave it.
Yeah. Yeah. So do we want to, do we want to open up a discussion of the front of retaining a door on Swanton Street with the applicant? See if that's a possibility?
Can, Brian, can you rotate your, your view back in the other direction as you are? Just, I'm not as familiar with the site. Just, I'm not as familiar with the site. Um, so is that just a, a large parking lot across the street?
That is actually a Parkview condos.
Ah, right.
And there's, there, there's, these are, there are two houses on this block. There's one that was just built. It was actually, this lot was subdivided. They built a new house, and then the next lot down is the one where the, um, the, um, oh, sorry, the nursing home or whatever it's called, the assisted living home is right down there. So these are actually the only two residential buildings, um, on this stretch of Swanton.
So in effect, by moving their front door, um, onto the side street, they're actually giving their own home a sense of being more connected to a residential street than to the big, big parking lot street.
Yeah, yeah.
Which I, I could see value, obviously, as a homeowner and a resident in doing that.
Oh, yeah, I, you know, I agree with you. I think that looking at the exposure to traffic and noise on that street, having a, an entrance off of the side would really be important. I think just maintaining some of the look of having a, a door on the front on the Swanton Street, just for the aesthetics. I think that's what the board's getting at.
I think in general, we should be thinking about the long-term picture for any devi- any street, and the long-term picture is that what you see on the left side, in fact, even the owners of this house who are investing in it don't wanna look at that. So the general goal is to make everything better, not to meet the undesirable aspects of the street with something more that's less desirable. Um, it just, it was, uh, it's kind of, to me.
So I don't really-
It's not an original concept. The fronting on the street is always, um, something you want for a pedestrian environment.
Right, but I don't think I really understand what you were saying, Maureen. Can you say that again?
The, uh, I, well, of course, we're heading off the board, but for the, for any planning board, what we're trying to do is establish some direction, uh, for improvement, especially in environments that need improvement. And Swanton Street, um, is a street that needs improvement. That's even in the master plan. It's a needs improvement place, and one of the virtues of this street, um, is this house, and this house is very nice. So the, um, what's across from the house with all that pavement is not what's, is not very nice. It's, uh, it's on a, it's, what, it's harsh. So what we're trying to do is pick up an environment and improve an environment where people will be living. I have no question, there'll be greater density on the street over time, more pedestrians moving up and down the street. And in general, I think one of our goals is to create a pedestrian, is to create pedestrian environments, um, that are, um, what, uh, comfortable, warm, and not hostile. And right now, this is a pretty, it's hus- it's a hostile environment. So, but I think all of this across the street, uh, it's, we are, our goal is going to be improved in time.
Um, okay, so does, does the board wanna bring in the applicant to talk about the possibility of just leaving a door on the Swanton's side of, uh, property? Or do we wanna go ahead and make a motion and vote on this?
It, can I just ask for clarification? Is it door and porch, or is it just front door?
Oh, no, 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 I, I think, I'll speak for the, uh, cause I got it started. No, I think every, the side entrance is totally normal. It's a reasonable request, and it'll connect with their driveway and their car, and no, I think it's, it won't change anything, um, except that it will remain, and as I said, there's still a door that enters to a, a, in the plan, still enters to their, the same layout of the house with the staircase. So no, there's everything on the side, and everything in their plans would stay the same.
Yeah, I believe the, the, the address would move to White Street. The only, the only suggestion is to add a door to that closed porch.
Or redesign it again, but whatever they want. I just, it's the door.
Yeah.
So the front elevation is unchanged, so really, the, is the point mute then?
The front elevation would have a door essentially where Brian is, where that middle window is.
Sorry, sorry, so they're enclosed, so they're enclosing the porch.
Yeah, that's why I, I was just a little confused about that. Okay.
It'll need some design work. If either just keep it as a porch, or if it's an enclosed porch, or it could be glassed in and a nice little, it could be really cool, glassed in with windows, so you could open it all up in the summer and just redesign the porch, but it, they're all, they're options, but a door, the request is keep a door there.
Also, wouldn't they not need to change the address? I mean, if there's a door there.
Right.
Why bother changing the address?
Yeah, that's up to them, yeah.
That would be what, maybe they like the neighbors on White Street more than they do on Swanton.
We've had neighbors over across the lawn from us. They, their address has gone back and forth multiple times, and believe me, I know, I can tell you what it is, but I won't.
So, um, do we, do we have a motion, or do we wanna speak with the applicant?
I would recommend favorable action, but if they're wanting to ask questions, they certainly to clarify, that's fine.
Rest of the board?
But you mean favorable with the condition to try to put a door there?
With a recommendation, I think, rather than a condition.
I think recommendation sounds right to me.
Okay, so, um, is there a motion?
So I'll move that this, um, proposal, um, be approved by the zoning board of appeals. Um, sorry, I don't have the number in front of me. Um, but anyway, uh, with a recommenda- a strong recommendation that, and I wanna amplify, and De'ab, you've done a great job with the minutes. So, um, with a recommendation that any, that it, a port, a porch, um, or a bay, this is more a bay, but a porch or a bay, um, and, well, I'll call it a porch. A porch, um, be retained, um, which could be an interior bay, but a porch be ret- that a front door be retained in some design, um, that is, uh, where the porch is located now.
Okay, a strong recommendation that the porch be retained with a-
No, that, um, it's, cause it's not a porch, so, well, it could be a porch. I guess it is a porch, that, uh, some sort of porch. How's that for not elegant? But some sort of porch be retained with a front door.
With, I'm gonna call it a door on Swanton Street, because we all have a feeling that front-
Much better, thank you, thank you. With the door on Swanton Street. But I would amplify, in order to, um, in, retain, um, the of front facade on the house, and to promote a positive pedestrian experience for, um, pe- for people who walk along Swanton Street.
Okay, um, positive ped experience on Swanton. Okay, uh, is there a second?
Yes.
Okay, uh, discussion. I think we've discussed. Roll call, vote please.
Hanon, aye.
Um, Meister, aye.
Wolf, aye.
Darius, aye. That is four zero one with Fundmaring recused. And Brian, if you could send out the bat signal?
Uh, all right, Heather is back in and a co-host. Uh, you should be able to unmute Heather when-
Thank you, Brian.
Yep.
Um, so, uh, moving on to number three nine three three one fifty-two Swanton Street. Um, Brian, your recommendations?
One fifty-two Swanton Street.
Oh, I have to recuse myself on this one, so I will, uh, take myself offline and await your call, Brian.
Okay.
Thank you, De'ab.
Um, thirty-nine thirty-three, one fifty-two Swanton Street. This is a special permit, uh, so it's be permitted to construct an addition that will be located closer to the side property line than permitted as of right. It's located in the RG zoning district and contains seventy-three hundred and twenty-eight square feet. Um, the proposal entails a, um, a large addition to the rear of an existing single-family house. Um, I could not find a front elevation in my packet, and that should be included. Um, I, I generally found this addition to not have any negative effects to the neighborhood and recommended favorable action. I did not have much on this, so I'm gonna bring up the plans, uh, for you right now.
While you do that, uh, Brian, are you representing the other Brian, Matur? Um, are you representing engineering?
Yes, I am.
All right, did you wanna give your recommendation or issues you have?
Uh, yes, so this, um, project increases the, uh, amount of impervious area beyond the threshold for engineering department review. Um, so the applicant had provided information on that, how they're gonna mitigate their stormwater from the site with an infiltration system. Uh, their design looks, um, reasonable. Um, however, there was one aspect that, uh, the engineering department is requesting the applicant to conduct a test pit at the location of where they're proposing to install their infiltration system, so we can ensure that the assumptions that they made in their hydraulic model are representative of the field.
Thank you. Members of the board? Any comments or concerns?
Brian, I, could you bring up the, I don't know if it, we did have something besides plans, um, and I, I have to tell you, I got rid of my stuff from last week, so, um, didn't expect to be back on this. It, but was there, were there elevations? I don't remember.
Yeah, I was confused, cause the street view looks like a two-family, but is that a different house?
Sorry, um, so, um, I don't believe it's a two-family house. Um, I also don't see the applicant. If the applicant is here, please raise your hand.
So I'm still seeing plans. Wasn't there, oh, I see, I can see on the, I don't know what you call it, thumbnail?
Yeah, no, so there are elevations, um, but it looks like they were missing portions of the port, what, it looks like, I thought they were missing one of the elevations.
Yeah, I don't see the front.
The front is unchanged.
But it's not in the packet.
Yeah, it's not in the packet.
Just odd, that's all.
This is what I was-
But we can, but we can pull up, um, the, the street view. Okay, so, uh, did anyone have any comments, or are you waiting for things to come up?
So this, this does look like a two-family, but, by the way.
It must be the one across the street, and the street view is wrong?
Uh, it does say one fifty-one. Oh, you know, it's definitely not that house, that's why. Yeah, it's this house, and the applicant is here, and his name is Richard Rohan, and just so everyone knows.
But Brian, you're not sharing the street view.
Oh, sorry, how about now?
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, I paused the share, that's why. Um, so that was not the house, that was the house across the street. That was one fifty-one. This is one fifty-two. The applicant is Richard Rohan, uh, who is here. So, um, anyway, I had no issues with this. This is the house, it's a single-family house. Um, and if you have any questions, the applicant is here.
Um, based on street view that we have, the elevation is changing based on the side view. So, Richard, would you be so kind to, um, lower your hand, unmute yourself for a second. We're missing the front elevation of the proposal, and it looks like from the side elevations, you have a roof being added on the structure in the front?
Uh, no, that's not the case. The, uh, addition is entirely in the back.
With the porch and everything is in the back?
That's correct, yes.
But you would see it from the front?
No, it's, it's all ca- it's, well, you see maybe a little bit of the roof picking up, but it's all within the back width of it. So, okay, so the re- the, the plans are, the elevations are not labeled. So this, well, they're labeled with this western. All right, so going, so the front elevation is unchanged as it is in the photograph?
Yes, correct, yeah.
Okay, um, so, members of the planning board, um, do you need Brian to pull up any other pictures for you? Maureen, you mentioned you didn't have your packet from last week. Brian, can you scroll down through the elevations real quick on number ten, eleven, and twelve of your?
Heather?
Yep.
The very first page that's the plot plan, looks like the addition and the deck go out to the left of the front, which means that the elevation does change.
On the first floor, yeah.
Yeah, you, can you hear me? It's, uh, Mark Lewis on The Architect.
Yes, we can hear you.
You would probably see a very small amount of the new roof over the, uh, uh, porch and deck area. Um, I didn't draw the front elevation just because I thought it was so far back, it didn't matter. I wish I had now, um, but it's pretty far back in the lot.
Thank you. From my, my perspective to the board, uh, as recommendation to the applicant to get that elevation to the ZBA, but from my perspective, I can actually see based on the elevations and the plans, what it would look like, but that's also, cause I draw elevations, so, um, if you feel like you need to see that to make a recommendation, then that's your option. Um, from my, my perspective is they're keeping the existing house intact. So I'm just gonna speak. They're keeping the existing house intact. They're adding on to the rear. Um, they are keeping the masting to one side of the lots, which, um, for lots that are of this size and, um, in this area, it kinda you have to do it that way, cause if you move it too far to the left, you, it's hard to actually get access into the back of your property, um, when they're this, uh, dimension. Um, so I am fine with it, and it matches what is currently there, and it blends, um, in terms of materials, it is what is currently there. And what is actually a lot, there's, so I'm fine with that. Other members of the board? Did someone make a motion? All right, seeing there's no motion, we're gonna move on and take no action then to number three nine three four, lot two, Abbey Road.
Uh, okay, lot two, Abbey Road. So the petition, the petitioner is seeking a dimensional variance. In order to construct a house that's located closer to the front property line than permitted as of right, property is located in the RDB and contains just over ten thousand square feet. The historical commission, um, did review this, and it being a variance, um, they did not take a position. They did not also, uh, say that a historic resource, uh, was being impacted, um, at the time. It's the same vote that they had given, um, for the previous ones on, on lot one. Um, so this lot was created through a subdivision approval by the planning board, a land transfer through town meeting, and a development agreement with the select board. Uh, the condition that the applicant go through the ZBA is specifically for front setback encroachment, and it was placed in the development agreement with the select board, not the planning board subdivision approval that the applicant states. The subdivision doesn't typically contemplate size and location of the proposed house, but this is currently under appeal with a building permit. So, um, the, there has not cur- there has not been a memo that's been issued from legal related to that appeal. Um, so because of that, I, um, my recommendation was to do the same as, uh, previously, which is that variances may only be awarded for petitions that fit inside the bounds of, um, as general law forty-eight, section ten, related to variances. And they can only be approved, uh, when the SPGA finds that the relief being sought is related to soil topography or the shape of the land or structures involved. And I did not find that there was, um, you know, there was- And I did not find that there was, um, you know, there was any, um, that the relief for front setback is related to soil topography or shape of, uh, such land. Um, so the application, I thought therefore did not meet the standards for awarding a variance and I recommended unfavorable action in regards to the petition.
Uh, engineering?
Engineering department received a letter from the applicant this afternoon, um, to which we have yet to fully digest and review. However, um, the responses to the comments made in that letter should be the responsibility of the applicant and not the town of engineering, uh, Tom Winchester Engineering Department. Um, other than that, the engineering department has no further comment.
So, thank you very much, um, members of the planning board. So currently, which we'll probably be discussing at a later date, there is a appeal with the building permit regarding the building permit. Um, that is different than what is before us right now, um, if that, we are waiting for town council to review that appeal and give us their feedback. So I just want to make sure that we know that what we're talking about right now is the variance and only the variance. We have received a lot of, um, feedback from abutters regarding, um, the various issues regarding that appeal, but we are specifically at this moment only talking about the variance to define if there is a soil shape or topography hardship. Members of the planning board?
I think it's quite straightforward, um, I think there's, that, there's no evidence of that.
Members of the other planning board?
The other planning board?
I mean, the other members of the planning board, sorry, accept my words.
I don't feel like I'm following this conversation very well. Why would we? I don't understand why we would care so much. Like, if they want to be closer to the front, you're saying that there's just specific reasons under, those are the only ones under which we're supposed to approve that?
Yeah, that's correct. Brian can elaborate in more depth, but a variance can really only be issued if there's a hardship in the soil shape or topography of the lot.
And that's, that's only for new lots, you mean?
Uh, any variance.
No, it's, it's so, yeah, so Mass General Law states that if you're, if you're requesting a variance, you can only, uh, be given that relief based upon uh, uh, something that's different within this lot compared to all the other lots around in this neighborhood. There's something different about this lot that's related to soil topography or shape of the lot. And that's what's causing the need for the vari, the need to bring it to the, to the front of this property. It's not the need, we know what the need is, the need is that this went into a, a development agreement with the select board as some type of a concession. Um, so the idea is that it got put in because it, it, it got put into the development agreement, the select board, I'm not gonna say why or, or anything, it got put in there. Um, that is the reason why the applicant is here, uh, they're here because it's a requirement, not because there's something wrong with the soil shape or topography of the lot. I know, so I don't know Heather, if you, uh, Hannan, if you have any more questions related to that. I, I do think it's important to get to the nitty-gritty of this if you want to understand how to vote, so I think it's important that you're asking this.
But how would we know if it's a soil issue or not?
They're.
Or a topography issue?
They're not cla, well, first of all, they're not claiming it. Uh, they're not claiming there to be any soil topography or pro, a pro, a problem. I also am not aware this area of land has been studied more in the past three years than probably any area of land that has been studied in all of Winchester, no lie.
Um, I, I, I think there should be some clarity also discussed that a lot of the issues that, um, abutters have have to do with more of the peel. And I think the planning board, I know I have voiced my concerns with the change in the site grading from what was approved to what is being applied for, there is a change in there and that changes the, and so, um, I, I have questions, but I'm waiting on legal as well, but that isn't what's before us right now. So some of the communication we have received is in regards to that, but that's a different issue that would come before the planning board at a different time. The variance is, goes back to the, the criteria for, if is there a hardship? And it, so that's where I stand with it. Because I, I can't see it.
I, uh, I, I unfortunately missed the beginning of your comments, um. Brian, is it, could you tell us what, we, we, we know that we, when we created subdivision, we expressly wanted the homes closer to the road to provide relief to the, the neighbors to the rear. If a variance is an inappropriate means because it's just not the right one, do they have recourse to some other means of moving it forward? Is that just a special permit looking for?
I, I, I mean.
Relief?
Yeah, I mean, no, it's not a special permit because there's no house there right now, there's a conforming lot, there's clearly the ability, and this is the issue. There's clearly inability to create a conforming house on a conforming lot. So you gotta get over that hump to try to do anything else.
Now, we, we have just passed what we've called the flexible zoning and we certainly meant it to be used as, to protect historic or natural resources. I'm just, you know, the, the, the planning board really made a decision to try to get those homes closer to the road. And.
So the, the, I, I, I'm sorry, Dea, Dea, I have to interrupt because it's really important to say that what you're talking about is, i- i- is a, is the difference between subdivision and special permits a- and, well, zoning for that matter and subdivision. This is what the building permit is about, this, uh, appeal, I mean, this is what the building permit appeal is about. You're, you're, you're hitting on the legal ramifications of the distinction between subdivision approval and whether or not you can contemplate size and location of houses and whether you can't. We are not going to solve that problem here tonight and most likely a court is going to have to solve that problem the way things are going. So, you know, but I'll stop there and I'm sorry for interrupting.
I think it's, Brian's got, Brian has, so, I mean, he's explained the law, it's very clear and our role is to uphold the laws and we are asked to just simply consider, does this qualify for variance? I mean, it's a very straightforward question and it's a very straightforward answer.
Oh, I agree with you on that, I, I just want to, the, I want to see if there's some other route that the applicant can use to get what I believe we all wanted when we approved the subdivision. And I do have questions which I will ask later about how this differs from, say, Winning Farm where we also approved a subdivision and had extremely detailed plans for where the buildings were.
It wasn't a subdivision, I, I mean, it was, it was, it was never a legal one, but I was on the board and you were not when that was declared and signed and I didn't sign it, but that was not, you were.
Actually, I was on the board, Maureen.
You were not, I, I, it was a Mylar, you were not, I promise you weren't, I remember the time when that vote was taken.
I.
There was an overlay district for, um.
Oh, okay.
Do you want to explain, please?
I'm sorry, I meant when the, when the, okay, so you're right, I meant, I was on the board when we approved the, um, the bond, the Winning Farm development, which did go through this board.
It was an ARC, uh, it was an ARC, uh.
It was an ARC, uh, okay.
Technically not, technically not a subdivision.
Okay, I apologize, my memory is as ever faulty.
It is.
Thank you.
Is there a motion?
I'll move to, um, rec, to, well, this is, yeah, it's a recommendation, um, to recommend to the zoning board of appeals that this, um, project does not meet the criteria of the law, uh, to approve it as a subdivision. I mean, as a, sorry, variance, no, I got it. This, should I start over? Did Brian, and maybe Nancy, that we're recommending to the zoning board of appeals, uh, to, um, I guess it's denied, um.
Well, I'll, um, if you want, um, I have the vote that we took for lot one. If you were, if the idea is to do exactly what we did with lot one in terms of the vote, it was unfavorable stating that under MGL forty-eight, section ten, variances may only be approved open review of circumstances relating to the soil conditions, shape, or topography of such land or structures and the requested front setback relief cannot be read to be within these bounds and thus is not permissible.
Right, well, I'll, so is that a mo, can I make a motion to reiterate whatever Brian just read?
I think we understand your motion, is there a second?
I will second that.
There's a second, we are currently, the motion is to recommend, um, pretty much unfavorable action, in this case, we usually open it up to the applicant. Does the applicant have any interest in commenting or are we all set?
I don't see a big discussion.
Actually, hold, ho, hold on a sec because I, uh, he can't unmute for a second, um.
Heather, how about declaring time on this, this is not, we're not bored here.
I, I have not heard if he is interested in saying anything, he may not be interested in saying anything. If anything, we're good, then we'll move on and do the vote.
All right.
I, this is the applicant, Steve Minow, I have nothing, uh, to add.
Okay, roll call vote, please?
Hannan, aye.
Curious, aye.
Meister, aye.
Cheryl?
Unmute, Wolf Eye.
Unmarrying, aye, motion passes, five oh. Moving on to number three nine three zero nine eleven Webster Street. My understanding is, um, there might be additional drawings that just came in, is that correct, Brian?
Yeah, yeah. No, that, some recent ones, um, I'm gonna make, um, Sally a co-host. Sally DeGan, the architect for the project. We got a double Sally DeGan, it looks like. Um, anyway, Sally, if you wanted to share your screen, um, uh, you should be able to.
All right, thank you, are you able to see my screen?
Yes, go right ahead.
Yeah, we are, um, can we give you, you think you might be able to get it done in about three minutes?
All right, ready? We appreciated your, uh, feedback. We are presenting a detached garage here in the rear right corner in green, a smaller mudroom addition and the addition to the main house is the same. So let me see if I can scroll through. So we now have this side sort of mudroom addition. The rest of this, the porch and the rest of the back of the house is the same. And front elevation, you'll see a little bit of the side mudroom here. This elevation is unchanged, the historic commission asked us to turn those windows and those windows into double homes. Um, here's the full side view of the little mudroom addition now. Here is the mudroom addition from the right-hand elevation. Rear elevation. And the detached garage. How was that? Was that about a minute?
That was excellent, thank you very much. Members of the planning board, do you have any questions? Comments?
I have one quick.
I really appreciate what she, they've done.
Uh, Dea?
Yeah, I agree, I just had one quick question, um, what are you doing with the driveway? Are you still moving it over a bit or is it going to be in about the same place as before?
Sorry, no, the driveway will remain, so it's hard to see in this, I mean, I don't know if I can. It remains in the exact same location, it simply gets extended, so it had ended right here where my cursor is. That part from the street to there remains and then we extend it back to the garage.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments from the board?
This is sort of an odd comment, but you know, when I see how additions can be made and see something like this, I'll go back to that property at Canal Street at, um, North Main. There's just so much that could be done and it's a great, I just think we should be collecting photographs and saying, look, you can start adding on to these buildings and make them, um, give you a lot of square footage and do what you want to do. Anyway, I'd like to make a motion to recommend favorable action.
Is there a second? I'll second. Heather, Hannan with the second, got it, before you, Dea, um, uh, discussion?
I would just say ba, I would say based upon the three eight progress drawings because there have been several drawings that have been, uh, shared, that was, sorry, that was it.
Oh, thank you, Brian, Maureen, do you want to amend that?
I've lost it.
Um, the, to add, amend your motion to recommend favorable action based on the drawings presented.
Oh, I see, okay, yeah, well, I don't even know today's date, my computer isn't telling me without.
It's the, the March eighth drawing.
March eighth, uh, thank you.
Heather, did you want to second that again?
Yes.
Um, I, before we go to vote, I just want to say you did an excellent job and thank you so much. It looks, it looks fabulous and I think the homeowners also will be really pleased with it. It really adds to the house and doesn't take away from it, so thank you so much.
Yeah, and we're, we appreciate the, uh, the wisdom of the board, so thank you all.
Well, you know what else? I think if, um, your clients are here and I'm starting to lose whose names are whose, but you know, we also had a two-family that were duplex, um, uh, just on the same street and it went a long ways, so you guys have been very patient with us, but the, the improvement on the other one is really dramatic. So I think we're doing our best to try to make, uh, retain the beauty of these streets and this is a gorgeous street, so thank you.
Roll call vote, please?
Hannan, aye.
Curious, aye.
Meister, aye.
Wolf Eye.
Unmarrying, aye, motion passes, five oh, to recommend favorable action on number three nine three zero. Moving on to potential town, spring town meeting articles. Um, so there are two articles that we are discussing. One is to do a standalone warrant article for the planning board report as one article. Um, instead of tying it into article one, um, having it as standalone report since it's part of the requirements in the state law that we report, provide a report to town meeting. And we ran into some little hiccups in the last meeting, we went to full remote and we're kind of grouped in and hidden. We needed to make sure that we had a report directly to the town meeting, town legal weight in and said, we have to have that report to town meeting, it's a mandate of ours. So, um, calling it out as a standalone warrant article going forward is the most productive way, I believe, to, um, continue and to keep that report separated from others that might get, um, pushed out to, you know, go to this website or whatever, um, happened. So, um, there's that, is that one meeting warrant article and the other one's a curb cut, so Brian, do you want to?
I'll just talk very briefly, so, um, the, um, so techni, so we have our hearing coming up, um, in two weeks from today, uh, for our, for, for spring town meeting. Um, so to, today was the first day that it actually went in the paper in terms of what we were potentially doing. So this is kind of a rushed situation because we found out that, uh, everything got bumped up several weeks because now, um, it's just, they bumped everything up several weeks. So the only things that we actually can get into spring town meeting is this curb cut bylaw. The planning board report's obviously not a zoning article, so, you know, there's nothing, there's no, um, notification, you know, that, it's just a normal notification through the, through the, um, the town meeting. But obviously, if, if it's a zoning article, we have a whole bunch of other types of notification which we've done and it is only related to the curb cut bylaw five point one point ten. And with help of the engineering department, we have a, a draft version that has also gone to legal already. So, um, the idea is again to get here in, in, uh, any type of, uh, the intent of, here, I'm gonna bring it up right now. Um, if it's okay, Heather, I was gonna go into the curb cut bylaw first. Um, in terms of a planning board report, I believe the idea was to only go over all of the potential development projects or points that were supposed to be in the report, is that correct, Heather? Is, is that what you're looking for, related to, I don't know what the discussion is related to the planning board report other than to decide what is going to be in that report?
Um, that, actually what's going to be in that report doesn't have to be made now, it's just to make, pull the warrant article, to request the warrant article for the planning board report, so.
Okay, great.
Just need to vote to put it on the warrant or to send it and then the curb cut bylaw. Just need to vote to put it on the warrant or to send it and then the curb cut bylaw is the real heavy one. I guess we could actually move on um and we could do it as a group vote. But did anyone have any questions on that planning board report to put it as a standalone warrant article versus grouping it in as the typical article?
I think it's brilliant and I really appreciate it. It's um always struck me that as anybody who's on this board should know. We have certain mandates under the law, state law, and that report is something we're obliged to make. And our report kind of got squeezed as everybody's told to do hurry up and, you know, rush it in. And there were a million other reports while everybody started falling asleep at town meeting. So thank you Heather for initiating that.
You're welcome. Anyone else from the planning board with any questions regarding the warrant for a planning board report? Alright, so let's go into the curb cut bylaw and. Talk about that.
Okay, um so I'm gonna kind of introduce this real quick and then um I'm just gonna put up. A new share and just kind of talk about what we were trying to regulate. So don't mean to pick on this house at all. It's just. Was where we were in Google Maps and I went around the corner. So what we were always regulating um was the width. Basically, at at if there was a sidewalk, it'd be this width and it would be twenty feet. We were, we're always saying this is the max of twenty feet. The question is, is that um there was no, there was nothing distinguished between what the curb radius should be here or what this flare should be. Because there is a normal flare of coming in uh, you know, just making, making a turn into a driveway. So there's a standard of flare of about three um. A three feet radius. The question was is that we were finding twenty feet here and then the actual curb cut was like thirty. Or thirty or thirty-five or whatever. So it actually was not really doing what we had thought. So the board had asked engineering to kind of come up with some uh, you know, agreed upon standards. Of if this is twenty, you know, what should the standard curb radius be and what what actually does this end up being this distance? So so that was the task for engineering. Um now I'm gonna go back to um the actual proposed town meeting article that we have. So the proposed town meeting article is, um everyone sees a word doc? Yes, okay.
Yep.
Um so the changes are highlighted and bolded. So we'd, we had had a maximum width of the street line of twenty. We're saying, okay, but the actual end of it, where for the curb line or the edge of pavement is twenty-five. And anytime where there's ten feet, for when you have two driveways, we're saying the 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 di- the distance at the curb line is fifteen. This is just re- reiterating that for for duplexes and triplexes. And then what engineering did, um Brian Mantor, if you wanna kind of take on over and he created these graphics. I don't, I don't know how well they're coming out um on the screen. I know they tend up to be small. Um but Brian, why don't you kind of explain uh yours and Beth's thought process here based upon the assignment?
Certainly, Brian. Thank you. Um so the engineering department looked at our neighboring communities that have similar situations. As to how they approach um curb cuts and how they graphically depict uh depict the representation. So we found neighboring communities that do s- are doing similar things that we were trying to do. And the top, top graphic is a uh a situation where there is no driveway, I'm sorry, no sidewalk. Between the um right of the roadway and the property line. So in this instance, we have a twenty-five foot opening at the gutter line or edge of pavement. And then between the right of way or the apron, it necks down to the twenty-foot. Opening that Brian was discussing earlier in the conversation at the um property line. Um the document below is uh an example of a situation when you would have a cur- curbing. And it depicts the curbing curb line along with the three-foot radius, which we recommend as a standard. That um people would use. Um the the twenty-five foot max opening is between the two edges of the radius as you can see. And similar as the diagram above, it necks down between the uh apron or the sidewalk down to the twenty-foot max opening at the property line.
Awesome. Thank you, Brian, for that. Um I guess it goes back to the board for any questions. Um again, this, uh we already did find that there's a uh, there's a small, different, uh inconsistent wording. Um I think we have here um gutter line and we're, and I think over here it's curb line. We're gonna get that straightened out. And I think that's the only thing that legal might change. Uh but um we're open to any comments or suggestions. Um as we try to move this forward and into the warrant on Friday.
So uh I'm. When I, when I, when we first talked about the width of the, of the drives and their impact on the street. My visual, my vision, I'm sorry, what I envisioned was that it would be twenty feet at the street. And so this actually is wider than I was thinking we would go. Um so. The, we don't need twenty feet for two cars to be side by side. So is there any reason why we can't keep it twenty feet, I'm gonna say, at the gutter line? And narrow down the driveway on the property?
Uh I mean, it's, of cour- I mean, of course you could, I mean, any change is possible. Uh the, uh really then if it's twenty there, then it, then your max opening at the property line is not twenty anymore. Then you're changing your max opening at the property line to probably be closer to fif- fifteen is what I would imagine based upon these. Three foot radius curves.
The flares, that's, oh, well, I, there are a few numbers I know really well. One number is eighteen foot width in terms of my road is eighteen feet wide. And you can get a school bus down that road and a car passing the school bus. So at eighteen feet, you can get a school bus and a car. Um twenty is a standard now for a regular street um without parking admittedly. But if you've got regular moo- decent moving like thirty-five miles per hour, you can get them going two directions at twenty feet width. So this seems really wide. So I'm simp- uh my, I'm hearing what Deah's saying and have the same reaction.
Yeah, I thought we wanted people to come in on a skinny driveway and that it could flare if they had a, a two or three car garage. Up at the garage point, not at the street.
I think they're calling, Heather, Hannah, I think they're calling flares the thing at the curb to the street. So um let's call it, it's, it can widen out. How about that? But I understood what you're just saying. Or it, I think we've also used the word trumpet. Um it can create a trumpet going out uh into the lot toward the two car garage.
Yeah, so the only, so just to, I guess, um.
Language.
Yeah, just to clarify a little bit is that, so this twenty, you know, that's what we had decided and it's always been at the property line. We had never, you know, we even, we have town meeting PDFs that we looked at in terms of how we presented it. And specifically said that we did, you know, we were, did not count these flares. So there's no, there's no doubt that the twenty feet is the max opening at, that we allowed at the property line. We were under, uh Brian and I were under the impression that all we wanted to do is if this is the max twenty, what is a reasonable distance? That you could actually do this. If you want this twenty to change, that's certainly a different bylaw change. You know, that's not, and not that that's not, you know, kind of possible, but it's certainly different from what was discussed.
So if we wanted to narrow that, should we do that at the same time? Or is it too late?
Well, so um if you want to hold on a sec, I can get the exact language. I think it is broad enough, but I, if you want to hold on just a second, okay? In terms of I need, I'm gonna look at the notice super quick and bring it up.
Then I'm thinking of, cause I've, I've navigated it a couple times, Heather, Hannah's driveway. And that's an example. Certainly mine would be the same, but I'm thinking of Heather's because it's more like this. Um that, eh you don't have flares like this in your driveway, Heather, and I could get in and out. This just seems extreme. Well, maybe it's not extreme by Winchester standards because I've also big wide flare. I'll keep using the word flares because that's what I, we've been using for a while. But this just seems like you could, it could be sharper than.
Yeah, the old ones are all straight.
Yeah, we don't have driveway aprons at flare in town. Most people do not have that apron that flares out. So the max opening at the property line is the max opening at the curb line. So that's the difference in these images. I mean, I look, I'm looking right now down, I can see all the way down lowering from my office. And it's, there, they don't have that driveway apron, apron flare, right? We have sidewalks and stuff. It's a straight shot to the um, the curb, the granite curbs, if you're lucky enough to have one, or the asphalt. Um curb. Or some don't even have it. It's a straight, although it's easier for turning and um you kill less grass. Um to have the radius. So I think that's another, is why, and maybe this question for engineering is. Why do the driveway aprons need to flare like that? Why can't you do twenty max opening at property line, twenty max opening at curb line? And then you have the radius curbs that are the standard dimension. That align with what DPW installs. Cause I know DPW does install the curb radiuses for certain properties, especially for town properties. What is that radius? Is it three feet or is it two and a half feet?
Yeah, typically, you know, you can standardize to whatever you would like. Um we've seen in doing our research that most common standard would be a three foot radius. So, but with respect to, you know, a flared or not, I think that the original question that was posed before engineering was. You know, what would be a reasonable flare? Um so in our research, we found that to communities that have a twenty-foot max driveway width, their flare would be twenty-five feet. Um if, if the board does not choose to wanna pursue a flare, then you know, it's certainly reasonable to have. The curb cut at the gutter line or the edge of the pavement to be twenty feet and standardized that. You just mod- we can modify the diagram schematically to represent what the, the bylaw says. Whatever you want the bylaw to say.
Well, the other, the, I think actually what triggered it more than, I think the flare, when I talked about flares, I was actually talking about the granite curb, how it flares out. So we had someone who came in with five foot radius flares, I called them, but you're talking about the granite curb. The driveway apron um is what you're referencing as flare. So we're both calling two different things with the word flare. So driveway aprons typically are not flaring as you in town. But the granite curbs are there or asphalt, depending on where you are in town. And that's what the big concern is, is how big are those radiuses? Because that opens up so much more of water movement, right? So we want to limit that. So um taking the flares out, if they want to have that flare, then they need to flare it down to eighteen or sixteen feet. That's their choice. But they can't go more than twenty um at the street cut or their property line. And then they can take it from there if they want to go narrower to get that flare look. The other side of it too is, and Maureen asked it, is when you have two cars side by side on a driveway, what is that dimension? What is that required dimension? Did it have two cars parallel next to each other? Um and that is the dimension that that should be at, whether it's twenty, fifteen, eighteen, what is that dimension? I think the average width of a car is closer to seven, right? So that would be closer to fifteen and we're going to twenty, right?
So what is?
Uh open doors.
Yeah, so what, if we look at parking lots, um I think we're at, are we at nineteen by ten? We're at a hundred and ninety square feet on parking lo- um parking spaces, I believe, and, and lots. We just had something a couple of years ago on that.
You're right. Yep, the parking spots are ten, they're nineteen by. Um I'll pull it up in the zoning, but yes, you are correct.
So.
Size of parking spot. So that's why the driveways are set to twenty.
But the parking spots and are, are, are special in that you, you could have three spots next to each other. So you have to worry about opening doors on both side of the car. Where typically in a residential area, you only have to worry about doors slamming into each other in between the cars.
Middle, yep.
Yeah, so I could imagine that you could make them smaller. And again, we're just talking about the entrance to the property. And so if they want to have a wider driveway on their property, they can certainly widen it as we've discussed. But I don't think you need twenty feet to get into your driveway. Um certainly, I don't know that having a really wider apron with a twenty-foot driveway actually provides you any more. Maneuverability. I mean, twenty feet is a pretty large target to have.
It, it is, but if there's a car in there and you're trying to turn, so I, I run into this, because I drive an F-150. And when I turn, if I don't have that twenty-foot width, I have to do a three-point turn to get into my driveway. So that's, if you make it too narrow and there's one car in there, you can't actually get in there without jumping the curb. Um to make that turning radius, especially on um two-way, like, well, one-way street and two-way streets. Cause you don't have the turning, you have to go into, far to the left, turn to make that cut. And then some of the streets are not wide enough to do that. So I understand the twenty feet. I'm, I'm not really a big, I would love to see them smaller just for the aesthetics, but I understand the twenty for the turning radius.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I don't have, I have a tighter turning radius car, so I, I can't comment on how hard it is to drive a larger vehicle. But I think twenty feet without the, the apron should be sufficient.
Uh so then, so just, just to reiterate then what everyone sounds like, or at least a few people are saying is that. The potential amendment then would really be the maximum width at the street line. Shall be, um sorry, the maximum, eh not even talk about the street line. You don't, um, you don't care essentially where that sidewalk is. It's really what's happening at the curb, if there is a curb or edge of pavement. It's really twenty feet, so take this out. Say the maximum width shall be twenty feet at the curb line or edge of pavement. So we're changing, so.
The maximum of three foot radius curb, granite curb or asphalt.
You don't even have to have, I mean, you, you cannot, we could simplify it. Forget the radius. You can just say with ever, anything you want, call it whatever you want. You have a three-foot radius or forty, or whatever. It can only be twenty feet at the curb line or edge of pavement and then that, that, that dictates everything. So, so that's, that's probably the simplest and still, so this is, if you look in, we would obviously get this okayed by legal, but. Uh meaning that does this, does this um thing I'm highlighting here, does that actually talk about what we're trying to talk about? Does that gather? I think it does. I think we'll be able to do just about anything related to this bylaw because of this. If Mina says different, that's another rule, no pun, um you know, we'll go down. But, but it, it, it seems like that's what, that's what I'm hearing. And that's pretty, that's a pretty big change. That's basically going from, it's twenty feet at the. Uh at the street line to actually saying, no, it's actually twenty feet at the curb line. So it is, it is, you know, as you could say, probably a difference of five feet. Meaning, you know, now, now that, that twenty is actually now about fifteen is my, is my guess if you're doing a standard.
No, Brian, what I think, it's actually, it's shall be twenty-five, twenty feet at the street line. And twenty-five feet at the curb line, including the radius. That's what we're looking at. Including the granite curb radius.
Okay, so, oh, oh sorry, so maybe.
Which is, right? That would be the twenty-five. And then the rest, that, scroll up a little bit. Right? So where the granite curb joint is, that's where the twenty-five marker is. Then the maximum at edge of pavement without any would be twenty and the maximum opening at property line would be twenty.
So then it would change the three-foot radius, because basically if you have a twenty-foot wide driveway and you put a three-foot radius here, that's where this twenty-five came from.
Wait, wait, but.
No.
No, because the three-foot radius isn't, see, you're, you're, you're twenty feet. Yeah, just follow the twenty feet all the way up. Just, I mean, yeah, so there's, it's more than twenty. The twenty-five isn't just because of the, the curved, eh the curved berm. Or the curved curb. I mean, I think if you simply said that that twenty-five foot max opening, say, call it twenty. And that ex- explicitly says that's where the curb line is, right? It's where the first, where you first hit the curb. So call that twenty and that allows you to have, it's a little wider at the street because you've got the curve there. And it's, we don't have to actually give that dimension because it's all defined by the radius of curvature of that, the, the granite corner. And so just have twenty feet as the maximum between the inner parts of those, of those curbs.
I see that. Brian, Brian, what do you think about that in terms of? Anything, me- meaning.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, I think um.
Yeah, no flare, just goes twenty and you get a three-foot curb radius, a corner, a curb corner.
Yeah, I think that can, that, I mean, that's easy to amend and, you know, I think that will afford that kind of, not, you know. It's not traditional like widening, but it would provide a little more access for someone to turn into a driveway. So I think that, that would accomplish that.
And then on, on the one above it, we would simply. And then on, on the one above it, we would simply make it twenty feet at the, at the gutter line or whatever you're calling it up there.
Yeah, almost, it'd be like a vertical line, and then the one at the, you know, the, the edge of pavement, it would be, you know, ninety degree angle.
Yeah, so it's no, it's just an extent, it's just a clarification on what we're measuring here for that one, so that, that makes sense. Um, I think the only thing that might change is that, that it probably won't be twenty-five feet. In, in this, um, sorry, in this graphic, if these are straight now, we'll have to get a, and, uh, we'll have, Brian and I will have to figure out what actually is this dimension, twenty-five. Are you, are, um, meaning if it's just straight here, and then you're just putting twenty from the bottom of the corner to the other bottom of the corner, correct? All right, okay, I think, sorry it took so long there, um, but this is town meeting and is important. So, um, I'm fully understanding at least what the board is thinking, if, unless there's any other changes. All right, Brian and I certainly have enough notes, um, to get exactly what these numbers, you know, we have everything we need.
So this is for the twenty foot wide ones, um, for the ten foot wide ones. Um, just so they were clear, we're going to keep them ten feet all the way to the curb line or to the street line?
It's the same, it's gonna, it's gonna give them whatever it is, I, my guess is it's a few feet. Maybe a foot on, a foot on either side with that radius of a little bit of flare, something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
And we'll have a, the graphic will, will, we'll try to get at least roughly what that distance is. I can't imagine it's more than a few, a feet or, a, a foot or two total.
What do you, what do you mean by it's gonna be additional foot or two?
So if this is twenty, let's say if we're measuring, so if these go straight out. This goes straight out, and we're measuring twenty to here, and there's still a curb radius, there's a, still a piece of a granite curb corner here that's going to cause a little bit more on each side. It's not gonna be twenty.
That's right.
Have to calculate that.
Yeah, just define it to where it hits the three foot radius curb. And then the rest is all just pure geometry. There's no, there, it's all completely constrained.
Okay, people want, people still want to know what is, how big is the curb cut, I, cause we have talked about this. They wanna know, well, how big is the actual curb cut? If you're saying it's twenty, but really it's not twenty. It's really, the curb cut is a little more than twenty. It's actually probably twenty-one and a half, or whatever it might be.
Well, you, well, it depends, so is the measurement of not including the curb or is it including the curb? If it's including the curb, then you have a three foot radius on both, which means it's six, so it'd be twenty-six to the joint. Or are you measuring where the curb begins, which actually fully isn't at the street line? But you're measuring that it's twenty feet, and you're measuring it from where the curb, granite curb radius starts. You have it labeled as a three foot radius, and that just, it's.
Yeah, we will take that, I think we take that out, and the, the distance between this point. And this point is going to be twenty.
And then whatever.
Yeah, and then, yeah, I think that's, that's all we need.
Well, here's the other thing is, um, from engineering's perspective, is there anything regulating those granite curb corners? Because we did come in with a proposal on a site plan that we reviewed that had a five foot granite curb radius on it. Which was opened it up to be just huge.
So why don't we, we just say it's a three foot?
Yeah, that's why I'm like, leave the label in.
Yeah, leave it as a three foot, and then the rest, I mean, you're right, Brian, people will wanna know what the actual opening is at the, at the street line or the gutter line, and that's just, you calculate that and it's a fixed number. It's not gonna be that much bigger.
It won't. I was just saying we were gonna calculate it.
Yep, and I agree. I, I take back my, whatever I said.
I am just sketching it. I'm gonna take a picture and send it. Sound good, Brian?
Sure, or I'll answer for Brian Minter as well.
Yeah, that sounds good.
Just so we all know what we're talking about and we're clear. And then what do we need to do as a motion, right?
I'll be the, the motion would be, so, um, this Friday, the twelfth, the, the warrant closes. So we are wanting to, um, put, uh, put these as a placeholder on the warrant, that, that, that's, that's where we're at. We're not giving any language quite yet or anything. We're putting a placeholder, two placeholders on the warrant. One for curb cut bylaw related to five-one-ten, and another for a standalone planning board report.
Do you want that as a single motion, Heather, or as two?
Let's just do it as one.
I'm going to move that we, um, move, uh, what, uh, uh, what, that we submit as a placeholder for a spring twenty-twenty-one town meeting. A warrant, the warrant article for the town, um, for the planning board report, and a second warrant article for a curb cut by, for a, an amendment to the curb cut by law.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Discussion?
Uh, I don't wanna slow us down, but I'm just wondering where and how do we capture our preference for, say the garage is way back for someone to not pave all the way to the twenty feet. I mean, have twenty foot width the whole way back. We're not covering that here, but like, how are we telling people that we would prefer that?
That's, so this is obviously just related to the cut at the street. Um, and relate, um, so what you're talking about is more of a site plan review, lot coverage. I mean, I, there's certainly a space for it, um, but yeah, 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 I think, I think you're talking about lot coverage, permeability, like tho, those types of provisions.
Yeah, we weren't taking that on in this. We were just trying to clarify that dimension with the radius and the flares.
Yeah, I just don't wanna lose the thought if there's another place we should make that change while it's, not today, but I mean, like this season while it's on our mind to think about it.
We do, we, we could revisit the hardscape calculation. I mean, that, that, that's actually what's going to probably drive that anyway, is how much can you actually pave on your lot, period?
It all supported at town meeting. I, I, Heather Hannan, I totally agree with you. These are, um, very, uh, harsh environments.
Yeah, I think that we'd have to also look at whether it's permeable or non-permeable. Um, there's, you know, that's, yeah, that would have to be in our, we'll take that up.
So you have a motion, um, that we, we didn't vote, did we?
Roll call vote?
Hannan, aye.
Jerius, aye.
Meister, aye.
Von Mary, aye. Motion passes five oh to place a planning board report and a curb cut bylaw on the warrant. And we will have a hearing in two weeks, um, on, uh, March twenty-third to hear public feedback and response to that.
And Heather, thanks for picking up on that, um, Heather Von Mary.
Oh, you're welcome. Uh, all right, let's move on to meeting minutes. We have a chunk of them. Um, we're not too far behind time here.
We've got one from two thousand nineteen, December tenth.
And I actually have a comment on that one.
Oh, really? I had none. I was going to say Nancy, there, I have actually.
Well, it has nothing to do with the quality of the minutes. It's merely that on page two, we were talking about getting a, a, a small, um, getting perhaps another design consultant, if Mr. Carlon was not available for review of a design. And, uh, I know that we had a list of consultants, and I don't know whatever happened with that.
Well, no, it's just things have been so wild, and they need to come in and we need to interview them and talk to them.
I know, I know, I just.
Um, given that everything was going on, bringing them in the middle of all the other things that Mr. Carlon was doing, which just wasn't. But I will leave that to you to take on in the next fiscal year.
To the next, the next chair, whoever.
And I know they're still on the record, and probably Brian has them, and of course Heather Von Mary and I aren't going away. But I think Heather knew some of the names I came up with, and I also think Heather had a couple of names, so we, we should certainly be able to give you recommendations.
Yep, absolutely. So that can be picked up as part of one of your objectives.
I'm going to make a motion to approve no amendments, no changes, no edits, and to thank Nancy very much for the December tenth, two thousand nineteen, uh, minutes.
I will second that.
Um, so, uh, there's only, there were four of us present, so, um, Cheryl, you were not present for this, just so you know. So anyone abstaining, I'm not telling you how to vote, but, um, you were present, so we're, let's do roll call vote, please.
Hannan, aye.
Jerius, aye.
Meister, aye.
Von Mary, aye. Uh, Pat, the meeting minutes passed four oh one with Wolf abstaining. Moving onward.
Um, January twelfth, um, I did have, I wouldn't, it's an edit, it's a clarification. I don't think you guys need to hear this one. Um, I do wanna just though mention to Nancy, just, it, we, our historic call commission, not historic, so just to catch that going forward, and then there's one other similar thing, it's a little longer, it's a few words. But I'm going to still move to, um, recommend, um, that we approve these, not, we're recommending, we're going to make a motion to approve these minutes. Nancy, I'll just stick these in the bin for you probably tomorrow. So I'm gonna just, let's just, I don't care what you guys wanna do with historic and historical. I'm just going to say let's, um, vote to approve these minutes.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Um, Heather Hannan, you were absent for this meeting. Uh, roll call vote, please.
Jerius, aye. I'm sorry, I did, I didn't wanna cut off Heather Hannan if she wanted to abstain.
Oh, um, yeah, I'm abstaining.
Uh, Meister, aye.
Uh, Wolf, aye.
Von Mary, aye. Motion passes four oh one with Hannan abstaining. Moving onward.
Uh, January twenty-sixth, I have no edits, nothing, so make a motion to approve these minutes of January twenty-sixth.
I will second that motion.
All right, we were all there. Roll call vote, please.
Uh, I think Hannan said aye. Jerius, aye.
Von Mary, aye. Motion passes five oh to approve meeting minutes from January twenty-sixth. Moving on to February ninth.
I was, um, guessing on some of these names, um, I know for, oh, I wasn't guessing actually. Um, there was someone called Mrs. A, that's Kathy Alexander. Someone named Marcia, I believe that would be Marcia Kuhn, who's been in our meetings a few times. Um, there's somebody named Marie, that's probably Anne Marie Braco. So those are things that I've edited and added. But, um, in the future, Brian, I think probably you should look at Nancy's minutes and just help her with who's in attendance, so she can fill those out. So anyway, I'm going to again, um, recommend, um, that we, I'm not recommending for vote. I'm going to make a motion that we, uh, approve the minutes, but I will put some things in the bin for, um, Nancy. Oh, I'll put these in. So I'm, a rec, a, a vote to approve the minutes of February ninth.
I will second that.
Um, any conversation? Roll call vote, please. We were all in attendance.
Hannan, aye.
Jerius, aye.
Meister, aye.
Von Mary, aye. Motion passes five oh to approve February ninth, twenty-twenty-one meeting minutes. All right, um, thank you so much Nancy for, uh, all that work you did for our meeting minutes and for always attending our meetings and sitting through these. Um, we are planning to, uh, get completely a hundred percent caught up, um, uh, for the twenty-third. Um, so, uh, we just keep watching for those meeting minutes coming through. We're almost there. Um, but thank you so much Nancy, for all of that. Now let's move on, um, so, uh, we need to do, um, go into executive session. We would be moving to executive session, uh, to discuss the reputation, character and professional competence of the town planner. Executive session is closed to the public, um, and in response, uh, to do that, uh, we need to do a motion and then a roll call vote.
To move into executive.
You need to move into executive session, and then just so, um, everyone knows, we will not be discussing anything, um, outside of this. So we will not return back to, um, to this, to, to, we're just gonna close the meeting as soon as we're done. We're not going to discuss anything. So there's no need to, uh, sit around and wait for us to come back. We'll close the meeting immediately following.
I move that we move into executive session for the reasons that the chair has elaborated upon.
Is there a second? Roll call vote, please.
Hannan, aye.
Jerius, aye.
Von Mary, aye. Our meeting is now officially closed. We're moving into executive session. Thank you to everyone, uh, give us, um, one minute. We'll give you a minute to log out, or we will boot you out. Um, thank you, uh, to Wincan, uh, to town engineering as well, uh, town engineering staff, and also all the residents who joined us this evening. You can always reach us at planningboard@winchester.us.